We're back.
Thank you, Alice. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm excited.
Okay.
Now, Karen, you could help me in this, too. I need to formally open the meeting, the pledge of allegiance.
So. No pledge, you just need to call the meeting to order.
Okay, at this time, which I have is 7:02 PM, 7:03 actually, on the 26th of October, we'll call the special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Public Library to order. Karen, may I impose upon you to take us to the introductions and the topic for the meeting?
Not an imposition at all, Matt. So, welcome, everybody. We are having this meeting in order to meet two of the consultants who I have been speaking with over the course of several months to help lead us through our long-range plan with a lens towards, through a lens of equity. We're joined tonight by Michael Holmes. He is with Insights for You, and he has extensive experience working with corporations and organizations on a variety of initiatives such as board development, diversity, long-range planning, et cetera. I was hoping that we could perhaps go around the board here and introduce ourselves for Michael. Welcome, Michael, so that he can get a better idea of who we are. Shall I call on people as I see you on my screen? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Amanda?
My name is Amanda Curly. I've been on the board now for, oh, is it two years? Year and a half? Anyway, I'm one of the newer board members and very enthusiastic about being on the board. I also was on the Austin Public School Board as a trustee for two terms, and I spent most of my career working in with the Yawkes Public Schools.
Matt?
Thank you.
I'm Matthew Weiss. I'm on my third three-year term on the Board of Trustees, currently serving as the president. My wife and I have been in the community for a few decades. Our kids went through the Austin Schools, and we hope to retire in Austin as well because we really like the community and we like what it has to offer, and we also like the opportunity to volunteer, and that's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you.
Shanti?
Hi, I'm Shanti Speller. I'm going into my third year as a board member. I'm in the community for four years, but I was born here.
Thank you.
Cecilia?
Hi, good evening. My name is Cecilia Quintero. I'm in Austin for 30 years now. My husband and I raised our daughter here. My background is, I kind of grew up in corporate America for doing affirmative action work for CBS. I was an HR generalist, and I've been on the board now, I guess, about two and a half years total with my prior experience. Looking forward to the presentation tonight, Michael.
Alice?
Hi, I'm Alice Joslow. I have been on the library board. I'm in my third term, my last, the last of, last year of my third term. I was formerly on the school board as well for 12 years, so three terms. I have three children that we raised in Austin, and I work at the Open Door Family Medical Center, managing a drug-free community grant. I know I've heard of you through, you presented at CADCA a couple of years ago, and I'm really eager to hear your presentation. This is really, this equity work is very, very important for us to do as a library.
Althea? Althea, you're a little frozen there.
She can't help that. That's the internet, unfortunately.
Okay, so I'm going to move on to Lucinda.
Oh, hi. All of my background is actually on the trustee's webpage of the Austin Public Library, so I won't go into great detail. I came onto the board in 2007 when we opened the new library, and I went off for a couple of years, and I came back in 2013. So I've been on the board for 10 years. I've been in Austin 32 years, and my husband and I also raised our daughter in Austin. She came through the Austin Schools. My background is basically in library science. I have a librarian's degree. I also am an archivist. I do records management as well. I'm a consultant now. I have 40-some years' worth of experience in libraries and archives, and also I was on the New York Labor History Association Board for 15 years as a trustee, and I'm happy that you're here to talk to us.
Thank you.
And Kathy, if you don't mind, I'm going to introduce you because I know you like to stay on mute. Kathy is the secretary to the library director, and she's amazing. So, Michael, can I turn it over to you?
And by the way, she was also the district clerk to the school district when Shanti, myself, and Amanda were all on the school board, because the three of us were on the school board together for several years as well.
So, Michael, I was hoping that you could tell the board a little bit about some of the work that you've done and how you see, how you see your work with us, based on what I've described to you.
Okay. Now, a number of people said, we're looking forward to a presentation. Did you want me to formally walk through the materials you've given people, or we're going to have a conversation? Because I'm prepared to do either way. What's?
I was thinking, I was thinking about it more like a conversation, but if the trustees would like you to walk you through the, or walk them through the proposal, that would be their, you know, prerogative.
Maybe a brief overview.
Okay.
Do you need to share your screen if you want to show your PowerPoint, or no?
Well, yes, and that's, that's why I asked the question.
Karen, you have to, you have to give him permission to share.
Yeah, I've set him up so that he can.
Okay.
Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So, just a little bit about myself. Thank you for the opportunity, first and foremost, and I'm glad to meet the members of this trustee and the important work that you're doing. I grew up in a small place called Brooklyn, New York, so I'm sure you may have heard of it. I have been, a combination of my career has been in academia, nonprofit, and for-profit. I have been doing consulting work for over 20 years because I've always believed in having additional revenue streams. So as I have been a full-time worker for a variety of organizations, I've also worked for myself as a consultant. I launched my consulting practice officially, and it became incorporated in 2016, really focusing on the work that I have been doing as a full-time person. So, again, I have over 30 years of experience in the fields of leadership development, career coaching, talent management, diversity and inclusion, which is a particular focus of the work that you want to do moving forward. And more recently, I have been quite involved in a lot of activities around social justice, racial equality, because we've been, I've been getting calls to do that. Some of the unique things about my firm is that it's a small firm, it's a boutique, black-owned firm, which means in working with me, you're working with the single point of contact. That allows me to have a level of agility, be able to also have some flexibility relative to nonprofits. So I do have pricing for nonprofits that's different from corporate. The value add is that I've had experiences with companies like State Street Bank. I've had headcount, neutral work that I've done. I brought best practices and trends to every assignment. And then, again, more recently, I've had, I was critically acclaimed at State Street for systemic racism training, psychosis of isms, and unconscious bias training, which I see as part of the work that we do. So that's just more of the recent. The four main categories of services my firm provides are human capital management, leadership training, diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, and board development. Board development specifically, when I started working in nonprofit back in 1985, I worked for an organization called Inroads. It is a leadership development organization that was started in Chicago, and I had the opportunity of starting up the first operation in the Stanford Westchester County area back in 85. In that work, I had to develop boards. So that started my work as a board developer. I developed boards for 20 different operating units, and in doing so, I've had to work directly with the boards, both in bringing on board members, building strategic plans, and helping the boards to execute those strategic plans. I'll skip through the other few because they just go into more detail, and will summarize my overview from the perspective of, again, the DNI lens is ever-changing. Right now, we have evolved from, I believe, some, there's been some evolution from affirmative action to diversity, and now diversity and inclusion, to now we're speaking more about diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. But all of that boils down to what does an organization want to be relative to the marketplace, relative to the people that they serve? Do they want to represent the communities that they operate and serve? And if so, that's where my organization is able to help others. So that, I'll stop sharing because that's the overview of that, and I'll go on to share, or at least have on the screen while we speak, the proposal that I sent to Karen, just so that it's on there. But I would say at this point, then it might be more beneficial to just have a conversation about that proposal than for me to walk through it, because it's a word document, and I think you probably have all read it. If that's okay. Before I do that, are there any questions about what I shared in terms of an overview of my organization or my own background? I'm happy to address those. Okay.
Okay, let me unmute myself. Your background covers a broad range of specialties, and I guess what has been most gratifying to you personally in terms of you ended your day thinking, wow, that was a good day, I made a difference?
I would say the two things that have inspired me, motivated, and encouraged me the most is the change that I've had on helping young people discover their direction and their passions and their goals for their future. And in doing that work for 25-plus years, I was surprised when I was nominated for that work by President Obama's administration as a champion of change. And so that's one thing that was very, and continues to be very gratifying to have professionals who are now in their 30s and 40s reach out and say, Mr. Holmes, you helped me get on the path of where I am, and I'm happy where I am today, is extremely motivating. The second is really this area of diversity and inclusion for organizations that truly want to be reflective of the communities in which they operate, for organizations who have a true commitment to that. That's the work that I, I would probably do for free, not making a pass for this organization, but I would probably do that work for free because I really believe that we can be better, we can be more inclusive, and we can be, we can be, we can represent the communities in which we operate. If we are intentional about it, we can, we can get to a better place. And I think we've made progress, but I think there's a lot more room to grow.
Thank you.
Have you worked with libraries in the past?
I have worked with libraries, the two libraries in particular, but not in this project kind of work. When I was the CEO of the YMCA of Yawkes, I developed a very good relationship with the head of the libraries in Yawkes. We, at the time before I left, we were talking about my conducting some work for her and her board, and possibly even going on that board. I worked with the library that I grew up with, quite frankly, before I went off to college. I worked at the Brooklyn Public Library, one of the biggest libraries in Brooklyn, which is where I, I got my teeth cut in being a user of library services. Outside of that, to be completely transparent, I haven't done a lot of work directly with public libraries.
But you obviously see the value of libraries, given that you spent so much time in a library when you were growing up.
And currently, my wife and I are still library users. We have our library cards, and we go to the New Rochelle Library on a regular basis until, well, they just recently opened back up. But I do, and I don't feel like working as an entrepreneur at home, my second office is the, is the New Rochelle Public Library. So that's where I spend a lot of my time, and a lot of, a lot of the time I spend there doing research on topics that I'm going to engage clients in. So it's not just when I was growing up. We are active library users. As a matter of fact, we also download, we're avid readers, so we download books because it's better to download from the public library and save yourself the cost of going out and buying certain books. So, anybody else? Before I just walk through a few, few points that may take us to more engagement, I just want to give this highlight. As I talked to Karen, I understood that you really wanted to move forward from the work that you have already done in your first strategic plan. You've had some milestone achievements. You've made some great progress. You've moved forward towards the mission and your vision as an organization. But as you want to move forward, you want to do so with a lens towards diversity, equity, and inclusion. And as we talked through that, that, in order for me to be a good partner, there were five areas that I said would be critical to helping, being a good partner with you. First would be knowledge immersion. I've been on your website. I've looked through the previous strategic plan, but more work would have to happen on my part so I can be fully immersed in order to be a good partner. And, but that work would be critical so that, just like any engagement, you have to understand the client's drivers, challenges, and potential gaps. The understanding is that there's a desire to do an environmental scan, an audit, to understand the individual stakeholders and focus groups. Now, focus groups could be a way that you get to more information, but there are other methodologies and ways to do that as well, which we can, we could talk about. Then, once the work is agreed to, there's obviously ongoing meetings with this, with the planning committee, so that you can ensure accountability and check in with individual members. And then there's the regular tracking and reporting, followed by doing work in collaboration and partnership with each member individually and collectively. When I have worked with other organizations, one, I'll give an example. I engaged this organization. It's called Guidepost. They produce faith-based magazines. We actually approached that work from a teach-the-trainer perspective. So I actually engaged with this CEO and his leadership team and a, and a select number of other people, and we actually trained them to move the work forward beyond my engagement. And I would think that we might also want to explore that as a way of moving the work through full execution, once the strategic plan is launched, specifically around the diversity-inclusion work, so that all of the members of the team could be equipped to do the work. So that's, that's the big picture thinking. The rest of the proposal shows that, and my, and my thinking is that I'm anticipating hours here of planned time and hours of unplanned time because this work truly is a year engagement, but from a budgetary perspective, I'm not sure that, the way that I do pricing for a full year, that I could fit within your budget for a full year. So I, I pretty much mapped this out as a six-month engagement. Okay. And again, if you've read the plan, I'm happy to answer specific questions. So I'm going to take a exhale for a second to see if there are some specific questions about the big picture and the way I think about engaging this team and members of the staff, and then key constituent groups in the community. I will say this, this work won't be achievable if there's not a very aggressive, active outreach into the community so that the community understands that the library has a DNI focus in moving its strategy forward, and it touches different parts of the community to get their buy-in as well as their concerns about that strategy. I think that's critically important if ultimately you want the plan to result in more participation of the library from communities that currently are underrepresented. And I think that's from my conversation with Karen, one of the goals of the strategy moving forward. So, I'm going to just engage. Are there specific questions about the approach of the strategy or other aspects of what I bring to the table as the consultant and a partner?
Actually, I have a question. What resources, Michael, do you bring to the conversation in terms of literature or that the community and the members on the team will be using as references?
Amanda, are you talking about what would I recommend that people read or readings that I have done? I'm not.
What you would recommend that we read so that we have a common language for our conversations?
Okay. So, there are a number of books. But one, I, I actually think Robin D'Angelo's book on fragility is an excellent book.
We just, we just read that, just for your, so you know. We just finished doing that as a shared reading.
Okay. And then, Tanahezi Coats is another author that I think has a lot of good reading. The one that I usually recommend is Between the World and Me, as, as, as one of the other books to read. There are a number of articles that I also recommend, and I also think there are a number of videos that I would recommend. YouTube, the one, the YouTube video that was done by Melody Hopson, who encourages us to approach color, courage, is, is, is one that I think is very powerful. And then I actually use a number of videos that come out of the corporate arena, one in which, in particular, which was done by, the name just escaped me, but they, what they did was they role-reversed from men's perspective and women's perspective, and they role-reversed microaggressions. And they could see how sometimes people do things or say things that are unintentional, but the, their intentions have the wrong consequences. So there are a number of ones that I, that I currently use, that I would probably suggest we use to elevate our understanding of what systemic biases, unconscious biases, if we're trying, when we say diversity, equity, belonging, and inclusion, what does that mean? Does diversity mean for you just simply the differences that we're going to try to leverage, or does it mean something else? Does inclusion mean inclusion of all of the different differences that we bring to the workplace? And also belonging, which right now is very much a trend. So how do we understand what belonging means? Does belong, does having a strategy of belonging, will that help our strategic planning to have people come and feel like they belong at the Austin Public Library? So, without giving away the full library, there are, those are just some of the ones that I use.
Thank you. That's enough.
So, again, jump in and ask questions. I will just say this, when you look at the outline that I gave in the proposal, I'm looking at about 40 hours to do the immersion. And again, the way that I'm thinking about that is, once we have an agreement, should I be fortunate to be selected, my work would begin on the same time as we sign an agreement. I've already been doing some of that work, as you know, Karen and I have been speaking multiple times. I've been doing my research. This is part in, this is part of the process of competing for work, and I get that. But some of this immersion work has actually already begun and will continue in earnest. And then that work will go on parallel at the same time that I start to engage members of the trustee, Board of Trustees, the management team, the staff. And then whether or not we're going to go forward and do a survey, what that survey would look like, do you already have one? Do we need to design one? All of that work would be steps that would be, that would go on immediately after the signing of the agreement. And you can see there that I'm anticipating that, that, the kind of hours, seven hours of meetings. And I think it's important to have individual meetings, even though your Board of Trustees from the, from the introductions that were made today are a very tight group, transparent. I think there's value in having one-on-ones, at least in other engagements I've done, values of having one-on-ones, and so I think that's important. I think it's the same thing to do that with at least Karen and her direct reports, and that's where the hours come up, relative to the other staff, to save on time. That might be more done in groups. But again, if we do that in groups, I would be looking for those groups to start to mirror some of the diversity we want to see, to the extent that you have diversity in your organization, by generational, by ethnicity, by people who live in Austin, outside of Austin, just to have a difference. And then focus groups, as I said, we haven't finalized that we want to do that work, but that would be one of the things that we would have to decide pretty quickly if we wanted to go forward, as well as the survey. And then, the next step is facilitating the planning meeting. I'm, I'm thinking that, at least at the start, there are planning meetings, minimum of six, nine. I don't know how often you meet or how long you meet when you meet, but I'm thinking planning meetings should happen at least initially every, every other week. And the primary thinking there is to give enough time to complete work that we commit to. You can have planning meetings weekly, but again, I would think that one of the things we want to do is do this in the context of how you already meet, so that you don't break your normal rhythm of meeting and pattern of meetings. But I'm, I would defer to the group as to your time and what you have time to commit to. Tracking and reporting would be on a weekly basis, because I think there will be things to report on a weekly basis, and that would be generated by me and my team if I need to incorporate some other people. And then, the last thing is just in collaboration with you individually, and if you have subcommittees, working with you as subcommittees in collaboration for internal and external communications ideation, relative to celebrating how we progress along the execution of the plan. Overall, if we engage fairly quickly, we get through the interviews and get into the, starting the drafting of the plan, I would look at a three-month engagement to get to a point of having a plan that this board would review and approve, and then the remaining three months of engagement is helping with the execution. So, I will stop there and see what I, what questions have not been answered.
You may want to stop. Good. I was going to say, bring us all back.
Yes, Matthew, you were going to ask?
I just have a question. One of the ideas that seem to be recurring for all of our society is how we need to learn more about equity, and we have to adjust the way we behave in the world. It seems at this time, the board, having done some work on reading and discussing the readings we did, such as the book that was mentioned, White Fragility, is, we're almost looking at the plan almost backwards, because we know we want to add equity in one of the components of our long-term, our strategic plan. So what you offer is very attractive, but I'm wondering if we're not positioning you in an awkward way, because we're saying we want this, and we're making a conclusion before we did the study, or we, before we did the planning. Is that coming across to you that way?
Well, it's coming across as you have, you have one agenda, but you do have some competing priorities. You have some competing priorities. And I, I look at it as, again, how do I help the board get to a place of enhanced knowledge and competencies as we execute the writing of the plan? Now, in the ideal world, part one would be, let's go. part one would be, let's go through a series of that elevation of immersion with the board becoming far more to build on the work that you already do. Reading books are one part of the process, but there's a lot more to getting to a common place around what's our vision around what we want to be as an organization relative to diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging. And once we're there, now with that in our tool belt, we can really build a plan that's going to be inclusive. And we're not going to be totally dependent on any consultant because we got it. And part of that is taking a step back and saying, what don't we know? Where are our blind spots? We're sensitized and energized around this, but that's one of the reasons why I like Robin D'Angelo's book because it helps people to say particularly, whether you are of color or not, take a step back and let's make sure we all come to an honest place about where we have gaps. Because if we don't address that, we're going to write a plan that's full of faults. Right? Matthew, yes, in the ideal, I would have suggested to Karen day one, take a step back and hire me as your consultant to help you get to a place where you all are saying, you know what, we're ready, let's go. But I do think you can do it this way, but it's probably not the ideal to do it, to try to do both. Now, the upside of it is, as we learn together, the plan will be inclusive of everything we're learning. So you don't have to go back and bake it in. So that's the, that's the positive side of looking at it. That the challenge with that is, and I'm trying not to oversell myself, that's where the, having someone with both the skill set of organization and board development and diversity, I think puts, makes, gives me an advantage in terms of your being a partner because I've had both. I have experiences of both of those. If you went out solely a DNI person, then I could be able to help you with the plan as much. If you went out and got a person who's all strategic planning and board development and not as much DNI, you're going to be missing that piece. So that's, that's how I would say that, Matthew. Amanda, were you jumping on? Because you're in the front of the screen now, so. No, you're on mute.
My phone was ringing. I had a call that came in. I was trying to catch it.
Oh, okay, okay. Matthew, good question, though. Anybody else? Well, I'm not one, go ahead, Alice.
Is, you, you, you say that it's a six-month deadline, but I'm a six-month timeline. That seems like a very aggressive timeline. And certainly glitches happen, right, to slow things down. So do you envision it more like an eight to nine-month program if we anticipate some glitches?
So let me, I put then six months is truly a product of Karen and I having a very candid conversation about budgeting.
Okay, okay.
In the ideal, this would be a year engagement.
Okay.
Board development, strategic planning, diversity and inclusion, elevation of knowledge and awareness. That would be a year engagement. I don't, again, I could be wrong, maybe, you know, Karen was, you know, she's got to manage a budget. But within what we talked about, I said, this is what I can do within, with that budget number, I can do this within this amount of time. If there is more budget money, then yes, then there is an opportunity to be a longer period of time and to give us the time to really maybe go more deeply into the DN, D E N I piece that Matthew asked about before we launch into all of the execution of the other pieces. That, that, that it's really a factor of budget than it is the work. The work that needs to be done is a, when I never do board development work, to be quite honest, with it being less than a kind of year engagement. And typically, when I do a full-year engagement around board development and strategic planning, I just, I told Karen that, I said, my, my budget is typically between $60,000 and $100,000 to do that work. And Karen, tell me if I missed our conversation anyway, because I don't want to misrepresent what we talked about.
No, 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 that's exactly what we talked about. Absolutely. And I, and I do appreciate it. We, you and I had several conversations and, and sort of tried to drill down to what we, what you would be able to do within the constraints that we have. So I really appreciate that.
Right. And, and that also was inclusive of whether or not as a board, you want the plan written by the consultant or me working with Karen and her team to take everything that we're learning along the way and help Karen as a consultant and her team write the plan. And I'm just the sounding board to make sure that we're, we're not missing some key pieces. And that still hasn't been definitively decided upon. I guess we'll do that once you make a decision if you want to work with me or not. And I've given her the differences in the pricing between doing it one way versus the other.
So let me ask you about that because I've actually not heard of that before. Right? Usually the consultant writes a long-range plan. So by having it written in partnership with you by the staff, does that give them some better sense of ownership?
Yes, but it also is
Slows it down.
No, no, no. What it does, though, in my experiences, when I've done it that way, the staff still has a full-time job to do.
Yeah.
Sometimes you go back to competing priorities. This plan can get staff really focused on this to the point that they're feeling the strain of their day-to-day job. And they have to write the plan. And if resources are already limited, then that puts more of a strain and it can impact productivity and morale and things. So the work that I've done in the past is, has been, we're going to come up with the budget. We need you to write the plan and we want the staff actually to just work with you and the board on just vetting what you put together. So we'll have drafts along the way, but we actually want you to do that work.
Okay.
And as I said, I've done it both ways. I've had, I've had organizations say, don't worry about the staff. We've already mapped out the, the thing. We've taken stuff off the, off their table, off their plates that they don't have to worry about for the next year. So we, we have that part handled. Having been on the inside as a COO, working with a consultant writing our plan, I can tell you that staff getting involved to do it is really one in which they get excited, but it's a lot of work. My personal experience is that that's probably not the preferred way to do it.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand. Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, any, any other questions? I, I, I will, Michael, I mean, Matthew, I'm calling my own name.
No.
Okay. So I, I want to, I don't believe in overselling. I'm excited from the time that, again, Alice was very nice and we met. She, she and I vaguely remember this, but I believe Alice came up to me when I did the session for CACA and she was very complimentary. So I, I remember that. Thank you, Alice. When I met with Karen and she told me about the work, I got even more excited. I believe in libraries being a critical part of teaching our community so many different things. Learning how to read, English as a second language, just developing the thirst for knowledge. But one of the things that's not talked about, and certainly was my experience and the reason why my wife and our kids grew up and stayed as library users, it's also a community where people of difference can come together. And that was my experience even back in Brooklyn. And I grew up in some very segregated neighborhoods. But when I went to the Brooklyn Public Library and sat there and saw people from all different backgrounds reading and learning and occasionally looking up when the librarian told us, don't be too noisy, developing some friendships. I think that's an under-marketed component of libraries, that libraries can truly model the communities that we want our, our country to live out. And I think where you may have some challenges attracting in the communities of difference that are not using the library as much in Austin, I think there's, that's where I think I can add value because I will just say this. And again, you don't know Emeralds that much, but when I first opened the Emeralds office in 1985, one of the communities I recruited several students from was from Austin. So Austin and I go back to 1985 and recruiting students from Austin Public High Schools to be a part of this leadership development organization. And it's been such a long time, so I can't quote any of the names. But if you ask me to, I'll go back into archives and try to find the names of the families that came through where their young people are now. You know, Johnston Orr is one. I don't know if there's anybody who knows an Orr family, but I remember Johnston because he wanted to be a marketing person, but he was so gifted in engineering. But he loved the fact that marketing was creative. So in his junior year of college, I had to have a come to, come to heart conversation with Johnston and say, Johnston, you can do marketing as a side thing, but your, your personality and your persona and so you're really going to have to make a major shift in who you are if you're going to go into creative marketing. And that was a very difficult conversation to have a junior in college. He still ended up building a career in engineering, but he did take his engineering and technical background to do some sidebar projects so he could satisfy that. But that name I do remember is, and again, I don't know if anybody knows the Orr family, but that was one of the families out of Austin that I recruited back in the eighties. So you have a hard task. I know you have some other partners to, to think about. Thank you for considering me. And if I am fortunate to be selected, you'll have my commitment that I will be all in. And you will always get candor from me and transparency from me, even including if I am not delivering on milestones and deliverables that I committed to. So thank you again for the opportunity. No other questions?
Great presentation.
Thank you so much, Michael. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. And, and would you just let me know what your timetable for decision-making is? So I can walk away with having at least an idea of when I might hear yes or no?
Well, we're interviewing the two consult, the only two consultants who we're considering right now tonight. And I'm hopeful that after tonight, the board will be able to have some conversations and make a decision hopefully soon.
Well, thank you again. Have a great week. Good night.
Here. Take care, Michael. Thanks so much.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay. I see that our other consultants, Pam Fitzgerald and Julia Prince from the Ivy Group have joined. And I'm just going to get them in so that they can actually speak and show their screens. Hi Pam, hi Julia.
Hello.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for joining us today. I was hoping that we could do the same thing as we did at the beginning of the meeting and go around and introduce ourselves so that Pam and Julia know who we are. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Okay. And I'm just going to go in the order of my screens. So Amanda, you're first again.
Hi, I'm Amanda Curley. This is my first term on the board. I was also served for the school board for two terms. And let me see, I've been in Austin for over 30 years, raised my three sons here and spent most of my career with the Yonkers Public Schools.
Thank you. Matt?
I'm Matthew Weiss, currently serving my third three-year term on the Board of Trustees of the Austin Library. My wife and I have lived in the community for decades, I almost said how many. And our two kids went through the schools here and we very much like Austin and we expect to retire here as well.
Shanti?
Hi, I'm Shanti Speller. I am at the last year of my first term. And I was born and raised in Austin.
Cecilia?
Hi, good evening. My name is Cecilia. I've lived in Austin for 30 years. My husband and I raised our daughter here. I come from a corporate background, doing HR as a generalist, working with FCC compliance. I was in a media company and working with affirmative action plans.
Alice?
Hi, I'm Alice Chaslow. I raised three children here with my husband. We moved here 30, 31 years ago. I was a, I've been a library board member. I'm in the last year of my third term and I was, served four terms as a school board member. And I work for the Open Door Family Medical Center, which is a federally qualified healthcare center. We have seven locations, but I'm based in Austin in the Behavioral Health Department and I coordinate the Drug-Free Community Coalition.
Alfima?
Hi, I'm Alfima Goodson, a lifelong Austin member. I am in my first term here and I just have a, a very, very background.
Lucinda?
Oh, hi. I've been here in Austin since 1988. My husband and I moved out of Brooklyn after living there almost seven years. I've been on the library board since 2007 when we opened our new facility. And then I went off for a while and I came back in 2013. So I've served 13 years on the board. And I also served previously on a New York Labor History Association Board for 15 years. My daughter went all the way through Austin Public Schools and I've, this is the second library here in Austin that we've utilized, my family. And I'm very proud that our, our community has been very supportive of library services. So that's a real benefit to us all.
Thank you. And I will introduce Kathy Byrne, the Secretary to the Library Director extraordinaire. So thank you, everybody, and thank you Pam and Julia for joining us today. Pam and Julia are with the Ivy Group and have done extensive work with libraries over the years. I had the pleasure of speaking with three of the libraries. Pam, the, the references who you sent me.
Can I ask?
Yes, Auburn, New Jersey State Librarian and Ypsilanti, which I like to say.
We call him Ypsy.
It is. They are, they call it Ypsy.
Yes, yes. I shared the Ivy Group's proposal with the board and I think I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to you, Pam and Julia.
Well, it's a very great pleasure. Thank you for this opportunity. I would like to share the screen and I'm trying to figure out exactly how I do that, Karen, if you please.
You should see something that says share screen on your screen. I think I gave you that.
Did you give me that permission?
That power, yes.
You did indeed. Thank you. And I will go right to that. With me today is Julia Prince. Julia is a project manager and she is responsible for a great deal of the research that we conduct on, on behalf of libraries. What I'd like to do is talk about the methodology, go through that and then tell you a little bit about ourselves, review some case studies very briefly and open it to discussion. However, I want to encourage you to interrupt us. We are interruptible. Usually questions come right up, you know, in the course of the conversation and it's probably much more it's friendlier and it's much easier if we just make this as informal as possible. The methodology we proposed in our proposal back in February, way pre-COVID, really focused on the most important issues facing libraries today. And that is how do you determine who is not using the library? How can you reach them? How do you identify them? And how do you determine what it is they need and what it is that keeps them from, from using the library? It's really important in, in our perspective that we not focus on the power user. The power user is the person the librarians see every day, the people that walk through the door and check out two or three books on a regular basis. They have lovely conversations. Often these people have a great passion for the library, great loyalty to the, to the library. We don't need to convince them. What we need to do is really find those parts of the community who, because of lack of familiarity or because their own lifestyles in some way preclude it, they are the people they are the people that are most important in a strategic planning process. Second in importance is staff. And one of the things that we try to do as we work through strategic planning is ensuring that staff is engaged. We want to be sure that the process is transparent, not only to the staff, but also to the public. But we believe that people that are closest to the decisions that are being made, those who must implement the decisions, are more likely to buy into those decisions if they have a lot of engagement and understand the underlying research. So, the process we are going to review includes a lot of options for your consideration. But we've tried to make this feasible for a library of your size, affordable. The process is anywhere between twenty and thirty thousand dollars, depending on what you want to do. And of course, for that, we take a lot of responsibility for not only the process, but the ultimate product. So, we begin with kickoff conversations. Karen and I have already gone back and forth on several things, so I think she has a working familiarity with what we're proposing. But certainly, one of the things we want to talk about is, do you want to identify a planning committee? Or is this something that the board wants to be primarily engaged in? Planning committees are great opportunities for bringing in folks who may not be as familiar with the library, but who represent interest groups or underserved populations in the community. It's also a way of identifying prospective board members. People that you have your eye on and think, "Boy, I think that person would be a great board member." Inviting them into this process allows them to become more familiar with the library. Conversely, you have a chance to experience working with them and seeing how that works out. During the project kickoff, we also want to identify together those documents that are most important for us to be looking at. The demographic reports.
Sorry Pam, I'm just going to very briefly interrupt you. I'm seeing the notes view of your presentation. Is anyone else seeing the notes view? Okay, we don't have, we don't have any super-secret notes that, you know, for consultant eyes only. But just so you can read the text on the slides, can we figure out how to do the presentation view?
That's really interesting. I have presentation view.
Do you only have one screen? I always get mixed up with all my screens. It's not the end of the world if everyone sees it this way. There's nothing secret here. But just in terms of slide, in terms of slide size, it will probably be easiest if we can get that over to full screen.
Let me just see if I can do this up here with display settings.
I thought you were doing it on purpose.
No, I wasn't. I wasn't. Is this better?
Email the PDF out later. How's that?
Yeah, and we will share this with you later. And I'm assuming you all have the proposal in front of you as well, right?
That looks better. Sorry to interrupt.
This is a really important time for us to also talk about scheduling, who we're, who we're going to be reporting to, who's responsible for what. Just making sure that we all have our ducks lined up. During this discovery phase, we're going to be looking at a lot of documents, including census and demographic reports. We want, we want to look at your budgets, your marketing materials. Of course, we're going to look over your previous strategic plan and the key metrics that you have highlighted. The library tour can be in-person, and we have planned for it to be in-person. Considering the current health situation, it might be wiser for us to do it virtually. We are currently working in Reading, Massachusetts, totally virtually. And I encourage you to talk to Amy Lynn, and the director there, to find out how it's going. Because we think it's actually, in a funny way, a more intimate process because you're talking to people face-to-face a lot, unlike in earlier times, pre-COVID times, when we were on the phone and making a couple site visits. In her case, what we did was, we actually had a student videotape the whole library. So, we had that videotape on file. We had looked at it more than once. I'm talking to Amy right now about some facilities implications of the plan, and we're referring to that. So, the real issue here is getting a sort of an overall sense of what really are going to be the issues that we should be looking at. Once we've done that, we really need to go to something that's much more objective. Julia?
So, benchmarking is the, it's the by-the-numbers analysis. We take the publicly available data that every library sends into the Public Library Survey every year, and we put all of that in a truly massive spreadsheet to look at each of your outputs. What, what's the circulation for the library, the expenditures in each area? All of these numbers come together to provide an analytical comparison of your operations. How are you performing, but also where are you devoting your resources? And we do that by comparing you to a peer set. And that peer set is selected on a couple of criteria. Most importantly is the operating expenditures. What is their budget, and is it close to your budget? Just so you're, you're working with the same amount of funds. But we also take population size into account, so we can calculate expenditures per capita and the number of locations. It wouldn't be fair to compare Ossining to a library system with fourteen branches. That's not apples to apples. We want to look at similarly sized systems that are similarly resourced. And these points of comparison, like I said, are not just, there's not an A or B or C score. There's no letter grade. It's just where are you devoting your resources? But of course, in any numeric comparison, there are rankings. This is a screenshot from a study we did for Cecil County Public Library in Maryland. This is one of the many, many tables. And the story that, that these numbers are telling us is really about the investment in the collection and how that's reflected in circulation. So, we can see that for Cecil County Public Library. They are not investing a lot in their collection comparatively. Their total collection expenditures are the lowest of the peer set, and their cost per circulation, so how much are they spending per material that circulated, also the lowest of the peer set. Yet, when you take the circulation into account, their materials are circulating. So, despite a comparatively small investment in that collection, circulation is robust. And that leads us to a question of, if the library were to increase its investment in its collection, it would indicate that circulation would also increase. So, it's an area for investigation by comparing these two different data points.
Especially, excuse me, Julia, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, collection is not the only area where benchmarking can lend some insights. We look at facility, the size of the facility or facilities, if it may be staffing, how are you? Staff compensation, a number of staff per programs, programming, all these different components to have a really comprehensive picture of what the library has prioritized, at least in terms of its spending and its output. Trustee interviews, there should be some familiar faces across the bottom of the screen there. I feel like I know you already. This is the internal perspectives component. This is where we get on the phone with you, and we ask, "What do we really need to know? What, what is the data not telling us? You know, we've read your previous strategic plans, we've read your Chamber of Commerce reports and all the census data that's out there. What can't the data tell us?" You know, it, it sounds like many of you have lived in Ossining for, if not your whole lives, at least the last several decades, that that is invaluable perspective that you all bring to the process. And we want to make sure that you're given the opportunity to, to tell us what we need to know to inform the process along the way, whether that's on the library's organizational health, the fiscal challenges that your community or the institution is facing, and the aspirations you have for the library and the challenges you face. We also want to hear about your role in the community, the political, environmental, social, technological factors that are at play from your perspective, and what you, what you would identify as the underserved population needs. The data may or may not bear it out, but you, you have an experience, and we don't want to ignore that. Very straightforward. If possible, we visit the site. We would love to come and see your library, present to you the process in person, review that preliminary benchmarking report that poses a lot of questions and some very meaty discussion. We will also present during this initial meeting on trends. We, we look at trends not just in library world, but in other industries as well. And we look at how those trends are influencing consumer behavior and consumer expectation. Because you don't operate in a vacuum. If I have a certain experience at a Starbucks or a Panera, I, I bring that set of expectations in with me to the library. The library needs to, to look outside library world and say, "What's happening? What, what mindsets are people perhaps walking in through our doors with?" And that's what we try to get at with the trends, as well as looking to the future of what, what's coming up? What do we need to keep in mind with this long-term planning? And then, of course, everyone's favorite swat. It's helpful to have a healthy discussion about the resources you have at your disposal and, and what could be threatening your efforts.
So, the next phase of our work with you will be to go beyond the inner circle. And by the inner circle, we do mean the trustees, to look at community leaders. Community leadership interviews are very productive in that they enable us to identify those circles of influence within town that might be leveraged during the planning process to reach people who haven't been reached before. We were, we were looking at the Hispanic population, for example, which is significant in Ossining. And one of the things we noticed was that there is a large parish that is very focused on bilingual services and service to Hispanic populations. Is it possible that the leadership of that parish might be somebody that can offer us insights that we wouldn't get anywhere else? We don't think we should be conducting those interviews. We think you should be conducting those interviews. And the reason for that is, especially Karen, for Karen to get out in the community and have a higher profile with those centers of influence that in the, in the end, might be really useful to successful implementation of certain strategies. It is also possible, once again, to identify individuals with whom you'd like a greater relationship and begin to talk to them about the library as a prelude to inviting them to be on your board. It certainly raises the library's profile. The most important thing is, and this is when we start talking about equity, inclusion, diversity, this is an opportunity to identify underserved communities or underrepresented communities so that we know that when we emerge with this plan, we have fairly represented all portions of the community. We don't generally recommend focus groups. And the reason we don't is because you tend to get only people in the room who either love you or hate you. They're there to bone, pick a bone, or to just tell you how wonderful you are. Non-users won't come to community conversations about the library in general because they don't feel that they have anything really to say. Nevertheless, what's really good about community conversations is that it gives the community the opportunity to participate if they so choose. It's a relatively informal process, and you get to hear things that you might not hear otherwise. I think it's a really good PR move, but in terms of hard research, it doesn't necessarily give us what we need to make good decisions. Another tool that we use that does help us make pretty solid decision-making is market segmentation. Julia is responsible for that.
And I just want to add about the community conversations. Many of the benefits of focus groups or town halls or community conversations, whatever you want to call them, many of those benefits are also realized through a community survey with an open-ended question at the end, which is how we structure our community survey. And we'll get to that more in a bit. Market segmentation. First, we have to understand what are market segments and what can they tell us? This is a tool that we use in our, in our marketing strategy work as well. It's a tool that we've, we've brought with us into, into library world that really has applications across disciplines. The tool we use is Claritas Prism Premier. It's the industry-leading segmentation tool. They gather all kinds of consumer data and insights. Everything from census data to surveys. I don't know if anyone here has ever filled out those Nielsen booklets of, these are the television shows I watch this week. These are the websites I visit. You swipe a grocery store, you know, member card. All, all of that data goes into the Nielsen Claritas machine. And through being abstracted and generalized across the country, protects patron privacy. There's nothing tied to the individual who supplied the data here. They're aggregated into one of sixty-eight segments. And these segments are at the household level. I always, I always joke that we're not as unique as we think we are because every single one of us falls into one of sixty-eight segments. And when you find your segment and you read your segment and you say, "That sounds about right. Hey, I do that. That sounds like me." We are all one of these sixty-eight segments. And these segments provide information to us on consumer likes, dislikes, lifestyle, media behavior. So, it's everything from, they are likely to read their newspaper on a tablet. They're likely to listen to new country FM radio station. They're likely to donate to NPR or public radio. They go camping on the weekends with their families. All of those media and lifestyle indicators form a picture of who is in your community, who those households are, what they're like. Yeah, next slide, please. That's what the segments are. Now, how do we find them? What do we do with them? The segment is determined at the household level, which is set by address. So, we take your list of library users, and we remove any personally identifying information. No names, no telephone numbers, no email addresses, just that address. And we then code that to identify the segments for every address. So, we're then able to say, twenty percent of library patrons fall into X segment. Twelve percent of library patrons fall into Y segment. We can also determine the segments that make up your community overall. So, we'll, we'll say this, in the city of Ossining or your county, this is how many of those households exist. And that allows us to identify the non-users in your population. We know who the patrons are, and we know who's in your county or city. We can then say, here's who's not using the library. We have a list of patrons, have the community. You can start to see the gaps. You can start to see the types of households who are not actively using the library. Pam mentioned the power patrons earlier. If we're able to attach circulation data to the segment, which it all depends on your, on your ILS and what you use, we'll be able to say, these are the segments that most actively use the library. They're the ones coming in for storytime or checking out fifteen books at a time. And how does their usage by segment compare to the segments that maybe have a library card? Maybe have used the library once in the last few years, twice in the last few years. But there's that scale of, I'm not a patron, I'm not a patron or not a, or a non-user. I could be a power patron. I could be a lapse patron, be a low-usage patron. And that's where that circulation data really adds some valuable perspectives to the story that we can start to tell with market segmentation. By looking at these segments.
Sorry, Julia.
One last point about the segments. We've found your users. We've found your non-users. You have all this information about them. What can you do with it? You know, what, what does it matter that they go hunting or camping or own this minivan or listen to these radio stations? You can use that to inform the types of materials in your collection. You see that they're heavy technology users, and they use social media a lot, and they read the newspaper on their smartphones. That tells me that an investment in digital resources is going to resonate a lot more with that particular segment than trying to promote large print books, for example. It's about matching the collection or the program to that specific audience, and then using the media insights to inform how you promote that service to them. It should, it should all align, and the segment provides that information. Or at least, it provides an excellent theory to test. Test and roll.
We've also included in our proposal a community online survey. We like community online surveys because they give an opportunity for the library, first of all, to let the town know that they are involved in strategic planning. And we've noticed that because strategic planning is largely associated with larger corporate interests or, or other not-for-profits, but not necessarily with libraries outside the library world. larger corporate interests or other not-for-profits, but not necessarily with libraries outside the library world. It really garners a lot of respect and once again raises the profile of the library. What we really like about community online surveys is we can actually qualify people as users or non-users and create a tree of questions so that we actually ask different questions of users than of non-users. User satisfaction is what we're looking at. What is it that works for them? Is the facility working for them? Is the technology adequate? What do they think of the collections? What do they want more of? Versus non-users where we're really going to look at barriers preventing use and what we could do, what might interest them in accessing library services, programs and collections more. So this is a wonderful opportunity to embrace the community in a way that the other research methodologies don't. You'll see that everything's sort of complimentary in this way. We do ask that the library promote the online survey. And obviously, because there are people who are not able to access the internet or don't have the technology readily, some libraries have made paper versions of these and the librarians have actually entered the paper versions into the online survey so that we get a lot of input. I'm going to stop now and just ask, are there any questions before we go any further? Okay, shall I just keep going? So.
Oh, okay. I finally unmuted myself. Pardon me. That was very unsmooth. Okay, in my notes, I wrote that you were imagining or expecting a cost of between $20,000 and $30,000. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And is there a particular timeline that you're estimating?
That's a very good question. Strategic planning generally should take, oh, I'm going to say anywhere from four to six months. Any longer, and there's a tendency for things to sort of peter out, for staff to lose interest. You really want to build momentum with this. In addition, we really like the idea of moving into the spring season and budgeting time because if there are budgetary implications to plan, that's a good time to sort of, for the board to understand what are the priority issues here and are there cost implications as we go into budgeting? So I would say four to six months.
Okay. And then I know you're still in mid-presentation. I'm interested in hearing about your experience with race, equity and inclusion work, too.
It's a great question. First of all, both Julie and I have attended the Equity, Inclusion, Diversity workshops that were presented by a client here in town, Piedmont Housing Alliance. And since then, we have taken that understanding to our work with, for example, the Richmond Redevelopment Housing Authority. We're sensitive to this issue, obviously. I'm not African-American, nor is Julia, and I'm not Hispanic, although I speak some Spanish. So I can't say that I have experience in that realm personally, but I do have a sensitivity to it. And in our work, for example, and writing is a good example, Ipsalani is another good example. We have worked very hard to reach out to those individuals within minority communities, within marginalized communities who need to have a voice in this process. That's an important dimension of everything we do here. If we don't hear that voice, we can't really respond appropriately. In addition to that, we believe that the planning committee should be representative of the community, not necessarily of the library community, but of the entire community. And embracing representatives of different groups within the community offers, it offers insights that none of us otherwise would have. But certainly, the market segmentation study enables us to understand from an objective perspective what it is that's happening in individual households. We can tell you where there are two working parents or single parents. We can tell you household income levels. We can tell you technology levels. And so we begin to understand, and that can be against racial makeup. That can also be very powerful to enable us to provide a profile of the community that's very detailed. And that is not just a result of subjective input.
I think the common thread throughout this methodology is that while we may bring certain experiences with communities of all types and our own perspectives, we don't have all the answers. And that's where we really do look internally to the library team, externally to the leaders in the community and to the community itself. This is not us imposing, this is what we think the library should do based off of our experiences, but rather, this is what your community has told us that they want or they need. And here's how we've connected those dots throughout the data.
When we work in Brooklyn, we did the Brooklyn Public Library Strategic Plan. We conducted focus groups in seven languages. We did telephone surveys in multiple languages. And what we found was very interesting in the sense that the things that are important are important to everybody. For example, it didn't matter what the ethnic or racial makeup was. People had high aspirations for their children. There were common values that we thought the library could build on by the same time being responsive to individual ethnic and racial disparities. And I think that that's an example of the kind of work that we've done that has had a galvanizing effect on the library board as well to rethink their presuppositions and their own assumptions about how best to serve the community. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Are there other questions? No? Okay. So we bring all this together in a summit. We call it a summit because we don't have a better name for it, but it's basically getting everybody together, including the staff, to really look at the research and determine what are the implications of this research? We use a variety of planning tools in this. And what we do is we identify large areas of strategic focus. And it could be, for example, as it is in one plan we're writing right now, it can be equity diversion, diversity, forgive me, equity, diversity and inclusion. Or it could be collaborative educational output. It could collaborative educational collaborations, forgive me. It could be any realm, but it has to be a large realm because within that large realm, there are so many smaller things we can do. But because Austin is not a large library system, we want to make sure that whatever is decided is manageable, is actually achievable, because there's nothing more discouraging than coming out of a strategic planning process and having a multitude of strategies in place. And the staff looking at it saying, there's no way we're going to be able to do that and continue doing our day jobs. And so we want the staff to look at the research and to come along with the planning committee, with the board, to assess what is really happening here and how should we best respond? This is an opportunity to look back at your mission and vision statements and say, are they still relevant to us? Emerging from this, we have, we arrive at consensus around those important issues that really should be the organizational principles of the ultimate plan. Then we turn to the library director and her leadership team and say, how do you want to organize work groups around these? So let's say that one particular area of concern is the facility. Who are the best people to sit on a work group to determine how it is that the facility issues can be addressed? And those staff work groups are provided with support. We give them a lot of support and a template. And they work through what it is that they think should happen to support that particular initiative. We ask them to justify it with the research. How does the research justify that you should do this? And also give us a sense of how they would measure progress. These staff work groups hand their reports to us. And they're actually sometimes only bulleted points, maybe a page or two. And from that, we craft the ultimate plan. But it's a very collaborative process. We just finished a job in rural Virginia. And we spent a good amount of time on the phone with library staff talking through what their work groups had decided, why their work groups had decided that. Then going to the director and making sure that the director was comfortable with the direction they were taking. And from that, we really drafted the final plan. The deliverable really has to be organized in a way that every member of the staff knows what they're going to be expected to do. So we have these areas of focus. We break them down into strategies. And then these tactical steps are what are going to, these are what are going to organize the staff's activities over the next one, two, three years. In support of that, what resources are going to be required? And this is really critical for the board's consideration as they move forward to either approve the plan or ask for some reconsideration of some of the strategies. And what metrics will they use to define success? We also believe that it's important to celebrate the ultimate plan. And one of the recommendations we often make is that when the plan is finished, for the board to invite the whole community in, but certainly those individuals who were interviewed during the leadership interview phase, to come in and celebrate the launch of the plan. Sometimes we call it a leadership breakfast and we have people come in for donuts and coffee. During the time of COVID, it's going to be something else. But we think it's really important that the library publicize what they've done. It's a public organization. It should, of course, be transparent about its plans. But also, we want it to galvanize and excite the surrounding community. And for that purpose, we often offer the idea of taking the whole plan and creating something sexy around it, branding it, making it fun. And if you have that internal capability, all the better. So here is our sort of layout of the timeline you asked earlier. And of course, depending on month two and three, the research that is selected, that can actually be somewhat accordion. But I would say six months is appropriate largely because we're running into Thanksgiving and the holiday, the end of December holiday season. And that sort of slows things down a bit. People are taking breaks, et cetera, et cetera. But as I said, with Zoom, it seems that we just do this much more efficiently actually than we do otherwise. Do you have questions about the methodology before I tell you a little bit about ourselves?
I have a question.
Great.
I was wondering how the process can elicit concerns or interests that people have, ranging from what Cecilia mentioned, for instance, equity. I don't, I can't envision that people that are involved with the talks or the surveys are going to associate equity with the library and questioning whether the library can get involved with promoting racial equity. Or what if, what if, would the, would the, would the work uncover that hypothetically 50% of families are afraid to come to the library because of COVID and 90% of seniors are afraid to come to the library because of COVID? I can't envision how the process might.
If you don't ask the question, you don't know the answer, right? So if that's a question, if that's something that the library needs to know, we should ask that question. We should make sure we ask that question. Is that what you, I'm not sure that I have answered your question.
That's what I was trying to understand. So you would have those questions in hand.
I believe that in crafting, especially the community online survey or the interview guides for the community influential interviews, what we need to do is listen very carefully to what it is that you think you don't know, too. So we're not just sort of saying, go out and talk to these people, but what is it? What are the key issues that we really have to explore? And I think that when you talk to people who are representative of marginalized communities, and I'm thinking, once again, we don't know Austin and forgive us for that, but we did see St. Anne's, the parish of St. Anne. We thought that might be a good place to go to talk to the parish priest or some of the parish leaders. Is it possible that we will glean some insights from them that we wouldn't get from any more objective research? What are they saying about their sense of their parish, the members of their parishioners, inclusion? Their economic circumstances, their struggles, their needs? And how might the library better serve, better serve them? So it's really not a question of putting the equity lens just in one place, but in using it in all dimensions of the research.
One of the very handy things about online surveys, we are able to ask some general demographic questions. You mentioned seniors. We can ask, what age range do you fall into? And then we can parse the answers by age. All that data is available. Now, depending on how many people respond to the survey, you know, we may or may not have enough seniors, for example, to come up with any meaningful insights for each question by seniors. But all that data will be there and we can cross-tabulate it that way.
I have a question. What is the contingency plan for people who are not going to be using technology? Some seniors don't use Zoom. They don't use Survey Monkey or, you know, or the like. So how do you get to that population?
That's where, for example, we just are in the process now of launching an online survey. And it's going to, it's actually in a couple of languages. And there are paper versions that the librarians are going to be handing out. And I think they also have a volunteer corps who's going to be doing it. I think the friends are engaged in this and posting information about it places like the grocery stores or whatever. The reason, the reason some people won't participate, too, is because they are concerned about privacy, as well they should be. And so we're not going to get 100% participation regardless of how we do it. But we can, in fact, use paper surveys to supplement the online surveys to reach people who are not online.
We also had a library recently, a rural library, very, very large county that served. Much of the county does not have internet access. We were actually able to integrate some of the data we had used for market segmentation with how households were targeted to take the survey. So we were able to say, you know, these households are likely to have low technology. And the librarians were actually able then to call households that were identified as perhaps having low technology to administer the survey that way. It is a very labor-intensive way to administer the survey, but it's a very, it's a way that makes households that may otherwise be excluded have the option.
On the other hand, you could say, we're going to conduct a community conversation that's totally focused on this community and personally invite representatives, people who live in that community, into the library or go to them and actually have a conversation about what it is that they believe the library could do to really advance their aspirations. There are lots of ways in which we can configure this. We're going into this a little blind because we don't know exactly what it is that the board would want us to do. But these methodologies can be crafted in such a way that they really do get to the answers of questions that are most pressing in your minds. The questions you're asking about including marginalized populations, it's not unique, obviously, to Austin. It's something we're struggling with everywhere. And it's, but it is important to not end. It is very important that we put an equity lens on everything that we do. And I know that, for example, our work in Massachusetts right now is focused largely on households that do not have technology and do not necessarily come into the library to use the technology largely because they don't know that they can. And so a lot of that's going to be really. And so a lot of that's going to be really about outreach and marketing to those communities. Do you have another question, other questions? Forgive me, I can't see you, I'm looking at the presentation. May I continue?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So I want to talk a little bit about us and I won't make this too long. We have been working with libraries since 1989. We've done San Antonio libraries as large as San Antonio and as small as Bernard's Township in New Jersey. We really offer a continuum of services, but everything that we do is research based. It's based around what the community says it wants and needs, complemented by objective research that enables us to craft the kind of messaging, outreach and programs that are responsive. This is our crew. I'm not going to introduce them individually, but I will say that is a picture of Julia up there and I'm not on this slide. However, the researchers here would be Ellen in the far left corner, Julia up top and Siska. Jan, far right top is our office manager. And down below, we have our programmers, people who will help us with the online and technology dimensions of this project.
And Karen, Siska and I, Siska was one of the pictures at the top. We were actually able to meet your head of children's services and head of adult services back at the PLA conference way back in February.
Yes, they were, they mentioned you.
So Siska and Julia that they had coffee with.
So if we, if you want to know what, how we consider ourselves, do we really look at collaboration as the key of everything we do? We're collaborative internally as a team. We collaborate with our customers. The librarians that work with us come back to us time and again because their needs evolve. And we've developed really close and
And have ups.
productive partnerships with them. Sorry? This is an example of just part of the list of libraries that we've worked with. We were the first company to put Novel New York up online. We've worked with Queens Library on their strategic plan. We just, as Karen mentioned, she talked to the director at Auburn. We completed work there about two months ago. And currently, as I said, we're working in Massachusetts. We just finished work with Charles County Calvert. And Ypsilanti has come back to us because they're looking at conducting some market segmentation. We also understand library technology. Pales is an ILS program that's across Pennsylvania. And Spark is their technology support group for all Pennsylvania libraries. We've done things nationally. We worked on a database and web presentation of founders online for the National Archives. That site won an award. We were invited to Washington for it, which was very exciting. We continue to work with the state of Pennsylvania on their power library network, promoting their, their digital assets and facilitating access to it. We began in Alexandria with community research assessments. We went from there to strategic planning. There was a lot of engagement there of communities. They have something like 97 languages spoken in their schools. So we had a lot to do there to ensure that everybody's perspectives were included. We went from there to marketing plan and branding. Licking County, Ohio is an example of a small library we worked with. Their major problems there had to do with opioids. And the library was working very hard to provide positive experiences, especially for the children, upbeat communications and intervention services that were responding to what at that time was their primary health challenge. We'd love to work with you. We appreciate certainly the opportunity to present. And we're hoping that we've convinced you that we have both a passion, commitment to library, a passion for libraries, and also the capabilities to produce a really fine plan for you. I'm going to ask Karen to pick it up.
Thank you so much, Pam and Julia. I really appreciate it. Are there any other questions from the board before we end with Pam and Julia?
Just the six month schedule, you're probably visualizing that starting in January, is my impression?
I, no, actually, I was thinking we should start sooner because what you want to do is get all that internal organizational stuff done now, between now and January 1st. And January 1st, you launch with the public face.
I see, okay.
Also, one thing about the online surveys, by the way, we found that because people are restricted in their movements, we're getting incredible participation with online surveys. So many people are online so much of the time. Something I forgot to mention.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to ask you a question. That is that, first of all, did we respond to your RFP appropriately? And is there an area of concern that, that we did not address?
I can't think of anything.
It's late.
It was a nice, it was a nice presentation. You've done a lot of work with libraries. That was good to see.
And you researched us a lot very deeply too. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
I was curious if your work has been compromised or changed or challenged by COVID? And as a result, the recommendations that are coming out from the work you're doing, libraries has significantly changed what the expectations are and the emphasis might be for strategic planning.
I believe the most important dimension of that has been how to change the customer service model so that people can continue to use the library even during COVID. In fact, it's more important than ever. It's been an opportunity for some libraries to promote technological assets more. For example, hotspot lending, and that's for people who don't have access to the internet. That's been really important because there are so many kids learning at home or, you know, at school at home, and they don't have access to the internet. And so the library has made curbside pickup for things like hotspots very convenient. So yeah, it has sort of taken them offline. By the same token, they, librarians are pretty optimistic. And they're saying, okay, you know, we're, we're in this for another year and a half. We're, it's going to be a real struggle. And some people in the community are really suffering. So it's more important than ever that we show a bright face to the, to the world, that we remain energetic, energized and open to the public, sometimes at great cost.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Pam and Julia. I really appreciate it.
A very great pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.
Couldn't be more different.
I know, right?
Thank you, Cecilia, for interrupting there. I thought I was going to put a pen through my eye.
So I provided you with the proposals for both consultants and I wanted to know what you think.
Can I ask, what was the estimated cost with Michael for six months?
It was, depending on whether or not he wrote the plan for us, it was between 20 and 30,000, 30,000.
Exactly the same, right? Exactly the same price.
Pretty much. The Ivy Group broke things out. So if we were to scale, not a scaled back, but just the core elements of it, it would be like 17,5 and then on up to 30 as we added the different things in. So the pricing was fairly comparable, I would say.
I was taking notes and I kind of felt, you know, these were two good options, but you know, based on the fact that our focus is really on race and equity. All of their library work and their specialty in studying analytics just didn't really measure up to what I was expecting to hear about before the meeting. And financially, I'm glad that they're kind of comparable for six months. They don't know the Austin Library. Michael definitely knows Westchester. I kind of feel like that would be a more effective fit, working with Michael.
Yeah. I mean, for me, I, I echo what you said, Cecilia. Also, I just feel like there was no type of, how do you reach everyone? Like, you know,
Right.
Just, you know, like, we have populations that don't want to use the internet, can't for whatever reason. And I just felt like there was no real plan on how you would reach those people.
Well, they said that they'd reach out to them by calling them or visiting them.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I wasn't sold on her answer with it.
I guess, Matthew. Based on, on our really low, woefully low census response rating for the town, I don't know that calls or visits would work either.
I think that both presenters had tremendous gaps in what we really need. But they also had specific skill sets that offer us, in part, what we're looking for. And by that, I mean that Michael's expertise really fits in with what our board development effort has been. And less so for strategic planning. While the Ivy Group obviously has the expertise in strategic planning. And I think that it would be terrific for the library to have access to the analytics they offer. But I don't think it's, we can choose one over the other at this point in time. I don't know if we have the right choices.
Could I just interject here? I didn't ask any questions. I know we were under a real time crunch here. And I thought other people's questions were really good and covered anything I would have asked. I thought both presentations were excellent. I absolutely agree with, with Matthew. That's what I was going to say, which is that they bring different kinds of expertise to the question. I can't see Michael really helping us develop an actual library strategic plan in the way that I've seen over, you know, decades of my own experience. I think he would be an excellent person to do board development and to help us, you know, learn more about the diversity, inclusion issues for our community. I'm really torn because I think that the main goal is to have a really good action plan for our community. I also agree with what Alfima said. You know, I heard what the Ivy Group said, which is they've worked with really diverse communities, even much larger than ours. They've reached out, they've managed to perhaps do more systematic analysis. I liked both of these groups really well. Actually, I mean, Michael is an individual, not a group, but you know what I'm saying? I think Karen did an excellent job at finding these two. I think the Ivy Group is even better than the Library Solutions Group we worked with before in terms of how they present their information. And I love the steps that they actually went through. It was very clear, very concise. But I really loved Michael's presentation of how he deals with all of the issues that organizations and community groups face in dealing with expanding their outreach. So I'm really torn, frankly. And I think that each of them, maybe we could hire to do different things for us. I don't think we have to put all our eggs in one basket. And, you know, I love the fact that the Ivy Group wants to push through and get it done in three to six months. I know Alice asked the question of Michael, well, isn't that an aggressive thing? But in my own experience with other libraries, we have done that. We've managed to, you know, push through and do it in that timeframe. I, I love what she said about dynamic and energy and keeping that moving. And so I don't know, what do others think?
I'm, while she, while the Ivy Group was speaking, I was looking at our strategic plan as it is. And I feel like we do have a foundation. And it may not be built on the data that the Ivy Group is, would use as their foundation. But I was so disturbed at the lack of, I don't want to say interest, but when Cecilia asked her question, she said, yes, they are, they are sensitive to racism, diversity and inclusion. But she said, but she said, I'm not black, so I have no experience with this. And that really disturbed me because it contradicted a lot of what we know from our readings and what I've been learning as I continue to explore on my own. And I want to keep our, our, I really feel like I want to keep our mission regarding racism, diversity and inclusion at the forefront here. For me, that should be our guiding message. The strategic plan will follow. But if we don't keep this there as our primary focus, I think we would lose it with the Ivy Group.
Thanks, Amanda. Because, you know, I'm, it's like, I walk into a room to see if there are people who look like my family, who look like me. I didn't see people of color in their slideshow. They had a slide of their employees and I thought, gee, it would be helpful if I could see names on that, on that. It wasn't even photographs. It was just like sketches. And it's like, you know, are any of the specialists they have working with them diverse? And maybe they don't have a diverse workforce is kind of what I was left with, which is not good.
I think they're good, they're, they each have strengths in different areas. But like Amanda's saying, if we don't get through the issue of board development and staying on, keeping the, that as a guiding principle. And as she was saying, the strategic plan will get done. But there, there is work that has to be done prior to this being done. And we had, we talked about that before. And there's no, you, you can't hire, you know, you can't hire somebody to the, for you, it's going to have bodies, guides, you tag. If that's what the board is looking for, then I think, you know, Michael Holmes is a person that could do that based on what he was saying. I saw some of the same things. You saw, Cecilia, about the presentation through Ivy. But, you know, there were certain things in what they can do that are, to me, are helpful for a plan. But no, they don't have in their, their work on equity and inclusion, just because they have been hired by libraries in diverse communities. They do, they, they have an expertise of working with libraries. There's no doubt about it.
Right.
So I don't know, there might be some, you know, there might be some way to patch, patch it together. I don't know, but. And then, then the, when they were talking about data, in my mind, I was like, well, what data are they going to find in the Austin community that's different than the data that's produced by the Westchester Children's Association? We bring. Because the data that they pull up is very thorough. Every and Austin is one of the communities they focus on.
You're talking about the Westchester, the WCA information?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm interested in Karen's, in addition to everyone else who hasn't spoken, but Karen's opinion on this.
I wanted to hear what you all thought before I put in my, my opinion.
Well, I think I'm the only one that hasn't spoken, right?
Oh, sorry, Alice, go ahead.
No, I think, did you share your view?
No, not yet.
Oh.
Okay, I mean, you would just said a little bit. I mean, I, I think that they're, they're apples and oranges. And- Okay, I mean, you would just said a little bit. I mean, I, I think that they're, they're apples and oranges and we, um, I, I, I feel the same as how everybody else had said, I mean, the Ivy Group with all their analytics and this and that and branding the plan. But I, I don't want like a fancy plan. I want transformable, sustainable change in our organization that's gonna serve our community better. And I feel like the discussions that Michael Holmes will have will help us move there in a more effective way. Than just turnkeying another fancy long-range plan from a long-range plan factory, which, you know, they, they do this. And they do a very, very fine job. And I would love to see the sixty-two buckets that people fit into, um, and, and, and all that stuff. But I think that we're really doing something at a very high level of trying to move the needle on equity in our community. And I don't think they have a clue on how to do that. And I think Michael Holmes could help us move forward on that better.
I agree. Um, I felt like a lot of their stuff too. I don't know. I just felt, it felt very cookie cutter to me. And I just don't want to be cookie cutter. I think that we have, you know, some different circumstances here. And so I just think that, um, you know, Karen did a great job of vetting people. I don't know, like, what we go back, I don't want to say necessarily go back to the drawing board, maybe kind of do some of what Shanti said. Keep doing what we've been doing till things. I, I don't really, I don't know really like what the perfect answer is. But I do think that they're both like, both, uh, different ends of the spectrum. And I also just want to say too that, um, you know, we know, like, next week, you know, it's election day, people are voting. And I don't know, like, I mean, to say, let's start now and in six months, I mean, like, we don't eat, like, the pandemic is still going, we're revving back up. So, I mean, I don't know about just signing that contract right now. Um, you know, where we will be in a couple of months before really doing this in the headspace that, you know, we would be in. I don't know if, you know, anybody else feels the same way about that.
Well, Michael seemed to indicate that, you know, we could be doing shared, more shared readings and, you know, moving our, helping our knowledge grow in this area. That's something perhaps that we could do in the coming weeks, but I'm not sure the long-range effort per se should really be out in the public until after the holidays. He can work with the staff, certainly. But everyone is so pressured with COVID right now.
Well, his, I, I don't remember his part of the, his plan saying a, um, going out to speak with the public. I think it, what I saw was the board and the staff and, uh, so I don't know. I saw his plan a little bit differently.
His, his plan includes, um, focus groups of, um, members of ten virtual meetings of a hundred people per focus group. So that would be members of the community or community leaders.
And did it have a survey?
Yeah, that's what I mean by that's the piece where I don't think this board is ready to do yet.
Right.
To go out to, you know, find those people to participate in that particular piece. The other part he was talking about. Uh, yes, the board development piece, I think, is doable.
What was your feeling, Karen?
So, um, I really like Michael Holmes. I, you know, from the first time I spoke with him, I felt really good about working with him. I know he is not a typical library, long-range strategic planner. Um, he doesn't bring with him all of the, you know, the access to the databases and the market segmentation and that kind of thing, which, you know, is a shame in one way, but, you know, I, I think that, that stuff would all be very, very valuable. But I also feel like those, those conversations that we need to be having with the board, with the staff and with the community too. I do think that, you know, we should be having these conversations with our community. I just get such a good, and I hate to go based on feelings, but I get such a good feeling not only talking with him, but then when I spoke with his references, I was on the phone with one of his references for thirty-five minutes. She was fascinating. I would love to have her come and talk to us too. Um, but just to hear about all of the work that he's done, in particular, having to do, one of the fascinating things that has been his focus is, um, like recu- recruitment and retention from a diversity and equity lens. You know, bringing in young people of color, of underrepresented groups to different organizations. He did that work in particular with GE. And, um, and that just, you know, when he was talking about that, I was thinking about the things that we've been talking about around the table, how to, um, you do better in hiring, how to attract more people to our building from different communities. I just, um, like, like I said, it's, it's a strain. I usually don't go with a gut feeling like that. I usually like to base everything on data and facts. But that's sort of where I, where I fall between the two groups.
And, and when listening to you, uh, when I asked him his question, he lit up, talking about identifying this talented kid. And what he's doing now. And I thought, that personally pinged for him, that lit him up. And, you know, when the two presenters that followed him were pretty much sticking to their script, I thought, I don't think it's gonna be the same experience. And, and I had other questions for them.
Yeah.
But I noticed that.
Yeah, I think if we went with the Ivy Group, we'd come out with a really good, solid data-driven plan
Right.
that would work
Right.
great in our community. But I don't necessarily think that we would be having those important conversations.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not a check, like, we're not looking for, I don't think, at least I am not looking for a sexy long-range plan. I'm looking for really making change in our organization to serve our community better. And he seems better poised to do that.
I'd like to share that I've been giving some thought to my assumptions going into tonight's meeting. And I am rejecting my assumption that we need a plan that fits the template of what a professional organized plan is. Organized isn't the right word. But I feel that there isn't anyone who has the authority to look at a plan that we come up with, working with Michael, that might say, it's insufficient. Well, wait a minute. I think that what we come out of the process with Michael could be a heck of a lot more effective and more constructed and customized for who we are. So I've made my decision.
I think if there's anything that we can, um, look forward to, and that is we're coming out of twenty twenty with everything different. Maybe our plan will be too.
It seems unanimous, Karen.
One of the things, can I just say, one of, one of the things I had wondered is whether or not, because I really do agree that I think Michael Holmes would be good for a lot of the preliminary work, for a lot of the discussions, and could help us get to where we need to be. Uh, but why couldn't we break it out into two fiscal years and, and start off with Michael and do this really good, you know, analysis of our community and then do a much smaller version next year, maybe in the fall, of an action plan and have them help draft that from what we have learned in our experience with board development. Cause they are two very separate groups and we need to do what Michael can offer us first.
Yeah, it makes sense to proceed with one and then consider bringing in the other. I, I feel that by starting with Michael, we would be able to merge the efforts of what the board has been working on with reaching out to the rest of the community at the same time. And I've always wondered, how can we do that? And he may be that bridge that'll enable us to do it.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
I just wanted to say that several of, um, I'm familiar with a number of his um, references, the places where he has been in Rhodes, uh, the Yearwood Center in Stanford. Um, and a, a, a lot of the, uh, the places, uh, the Yonkers YMCA. Um, and my knowledge of them, that they are places that are very ingrained in the communities where they are. And so I also think that's a plus because, um, you know, he's worked with, um, groups that the communities are very, very heavily dependent on. Dependent in a way, in a good way, in a way that, um, you know, um, they are actually the overutilized. You know what I'm saying? They're, they're, they're not places where, you know, it's a ghost town and nobody's in there. So that's, I think that that's a plus too.
Would we feel comfortable, um, oh, it sounds like we want to work with Michael. Um, would we feel comfortable working with him? You know, he gave us a proposal where we could have him do, um, everything but writing a strategic plan for us? Or we could have him write the strategic plan for us? Do we want to engage him for the, for the terms of maybe not writing the plan for us? And get to the point, and get to a point, and then perhaps revisit that? Or do we want to go the whole way with him? You're muted, Matt.
No, I'm not. If, uh, if he were, if someone else were to write the plan, it's like we're working with him and driving a car with our foot on the brake. Well, you know, telling him, okay, do all this work, but you're not gonna finish.
Yeah.
I agree.
I would just like to start with him and, and I like the fact that he broke it out. And if things go well and we're all, you know, very impressed with the work, which I think we will be, then we can revisit it and then we can extend the contract. Uh, I think he did that deliberately to see how it works out.
Well, he did that because I gave him such a little
Oh, oh, okay. Right, right. That's right. He said it was a year-long process and so he was trying to do it into six months.
Yeah.
And I, and I don't think that personally, I think it would be a really honorous task to ask you and the other librarians to write the plan based on the information he gets. So we do need to have someone write the plan.
Yeah.
And if it's Michael, maybe we ought to plan on putting the money aside to pay him to do it.
Well, we have, um, we have budgeted twenty thousand dollars for the long-range plan for this fiscal year. So for him to write the plan, um, we would, you know, for him to do the whole thing, we'd have to come up with another ten thousand dollars, but regardless, forget about all the HVAC work that needs to be done. Um, we do, we do have a nice, healthy fund balance, which is, you know, which can be used for this purpose. And we did have some savings last year, so, um, you know, if the board feels comfortable doing that, then it's there.
Maybe it would help if, when we come to that decision, if he could provide us with the plan, a, a copy of a plan that he has written, so we can see what performance.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah. And I agree with what Alice said earlier and what others had mentioned, that with the holidays coming, that it would be good to start in January perhaps and do January to June with him. So that gives us
I think we could do some reading. I mean, he could certainly, we could start with some reading and videos and things like that. I mean, I don't want to lose that time.
Right.
But we certainly wouldn't be reaching out into the community until after the holidays. And I don't think, like Sean, like Shanti said, I don't think we're ready to reach out to the
I agree. I agree.
Yes, I mean, he, um,
if he had
Also said that we probably should, um, we should probably continue along the lines of the meetings that we already had started.
Right, right.
He said that, that we should continue along. So I, I'm not so sure that we should wait till January to, you know, get things rolling.
No, I think we could, yeah. I think we could continue what we're doing together.
I think that it would be if, if we, um, decide to do this, well, I think we're going to decide to do this, something. Um, I do think it would be prudent to start sooner rather than later and do the preliminary work now. Start the preliminary work now. And yes, knowing that going out to the public is not wise prior to, or, you know, prior to the holidays. But that gives us time to get the internal stuff sort of started. And, um, it, it moves us along because my, there, there's no urgency to anything, but my fear is that if we, if we just put things off a few months and a few months, it just Yeah. put off another few months and
We don't want to lose the momentum.
Exactly. We don't want to
We want to keep moving forward.
Right.
Well, I'm excited. I'm excited.
We don't want to enter another budgetary crisis to prevent this from happening.
No.
Don't say that, Matt. Don't say that.
Is this a good time to bring up our coming together for our next board development meeting, setting a date? Or yes or no, Matt?
How about tomorrow? How about Wednesday, the twenty-eighth?
Nope, I can't do it. I have a class that, that night.
Well, I guess what will we be talking about? That's the other question, because we may need to prepare.
Yeah.
Well, do we want to have Michael, um, attend our next meeting?
Well, he, he'd be under contract already?
Yeah.
He won't be under contract yet.
I'm sure he, if he knows that we're getting ready to do the work, he's not gonna be bound by the signature.
Yes, he would. Yes, he is. He's a consultant.
Exactly.
You're right. I want to know we're gonna pay.
I wanted to ask you, Karen, did you pay for their preliminary proposals?
Till we sign the line, you're right.
Yeah. Did you ask for, for any fun, money to give them for their proposals, though?
No.
Oh.
Um, I don't know. Has anybody, uh, else read book by Tana H.
Yeah.
Not yet.
I've read both his books for my multicultural memoirs class. He also wrote an excellent article you can look up in the Atlantic Magazine on reparations for slavery, which is just, it's a keystone document. It was from twenty fourteen.
Is this the book you're talking about?
Between the World and Me, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
This is a good one.
Yeah, this is a little shorter.
And this is a good one.
He had mentioned this one, didn't he?
Yeah.
Yes. What's that one? Just Us?
What's that about? What is that?
Who's that by?
Claudia Rankine.
Oh, Claudia Rankine.
Yeah, she's, she's a poet and, and author and has great insight.
My daughter's reading that book in her graduate course at BU now, this semester.
So I don't, um, Amanda, I don't know if we actually have a topic. I, I suppose, uh, a couple of us could come up with something and put it out and, um, uh, what do you call those? Google, um,
Google poll.
Polls.
Or, yeah, or maybe we could, uh, we could each find an article that we find interesting to share around, you know, and write in a book.
That's not a bad idea. If it's hot luck, we could each bring a reading.
I could do that.
Yeah. Or a video.
So when would that, when would the next meeting be, uh?
We didn't pick it.
November second, oh.
That's the night before the election.
Yeah, I don't know what state I'll be in.
We'll all need, are you, a date. Yeah, are you gonna provide Xanax to each of us?
Or good cocktails.
Our board meeting is November sixteenth.
So what's the weekend be, what's the Monday before that?
The ninth.
Let's keep your mind.
So, how about that?
November ninth.
That was the only Monday open. All right, we'll do it.
Monday nights on Monday night sounds good to me.
Cause I'm not going anywhere for Thanksgiving.
November nine.
Nobody should go anywhere.
So what would you like me to do with regards to Michael?
Yeah, Michael.
I would say tell him that he was the unanimous choice and start moving forward. Is that wrong?
That's correct.
I guess I would like more of an outline of exactly how his um work would break out, you know, like, well, he he did give a general outline of what he would do. But if he could maybe specify, and if we're starting off with him this fall, he could say what he's gonna do first.
That, that um thing that.
Just an outline.
He presented is very detailed, Lucinda.
It is.
Maybe you're not looking at the right one, but, cause there was more than one, but it was very detailed.
More than one.
I think, I think what Amanda said, uh, yeah, I would like to see a a sample of his, uh, one of his. Um. His, yeah, his strategic plans, not that that would, you know, but just.
I just remember him saying that he hadn't really done strategic plans per se, he did diversity plans. Was was I wrong on that?
Oh, I didn't hear him say that.
He said, had he worked with any libraries, I can't remember.
In Brooklyn?
No.
Yeah, he said, he, he said he worked with two.
Brooklyn and um.
Oh, yes, he worked with, but not on like a strategic planning project.
Yeah, it wasn't a strategic plan.
His, his consulting work is mainly focused on, I would say, board development, um, diversity and inclusion.
Yeah.
And um, and and that kind of thing, and the strategic planning is sort of, is sort of pulled into that, especially with the board development work that he does. But he doesn't write long range strategic plans for public libraries, he's never done that before.
Right.
Yes, he has, you're just recalling it something different.
Okay.
That's what we're up to, that we're at the point now where we're not taking the 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 recipe that's been prepared all these years for all these libraries. And calling it a plan, we're taking his recipe and his ingredients and calling that the plan.
Mm-hmm.
So do you, do you still want me to ask him for a plan that he's written?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, just, you know, just let him know, we, we wanna take, uh, take a peek at what. We're gonna end up with.
Okay.
They wanna sample the dish before we buy it.
That's right.
Also too, um, maybe could we ask him about um. Like, the next, what is that next step, is there preliminary work to be done prior to working with him, like, like, you know, how does he work?
Yeah, that's what I was asking, yeah, exactly.
Oh. I remember it said, it was, you have to find a page that says, it says, board trustees, eight hours, and then he breaks it down by the hours.
Yeah, no, that was like, that was his conversation with us.
That board people, staff managers, it was eight hours, we were seven, yeah, I remember that.
The whole list, it wasn't just us.
No, no, those are the conversations, and I guess, I mean, I saw him listed, but I'm talking about prior to these conversations. Should we read White Fragility, watch a couple of TEDx's, like, how, like, what do we, you know, what is the plan, I mean, I saw what he wrote.
Once he signs the contract, I'm sure he'll tell us.
Yeah.
For that, he's not telling us anything.
Well, I mean. It can be helpful so that we know how we need to align things, because.
Yeah.
Sign the contract, you know, the sand and the hourglass, it, we're at the clock.
Yep, yeah, right.
Right.
I'm sorry, could we end the meeting soon?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear about what I'm supposed to do and what I'm supposed to say. Um, so are we signing the contract with Michael for the full shooting match? Or are I, am I waiting to sign the contract with Michael and asking him, asking him first for a sample of his long range plan? And information about the starting point, or am I doing those things simultaneously?
Do we have to do this in a, in a board meeting that's publicly recorded?
Right.
This is a board meeting that's being publicly recorded.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So we wanna work with him.
Yeah. We wanna sign the contract.
We wanna know what are the steps before he, we get started, that's what Althea was saying.
Yep.
And what is the product that we'll have at the end?
And to give us, given the time now, give us some more detailed, you know, timeline. Recognizing the holidays in December, not much gets done.
Well, even if we sign a contract, that contract wouldn't be signed until.
The seventeenth, after our board meeting.
Right, so we are talking about, right, that almost puts it forward a couple of months to begin with.
Well, we could certainly meet with him in late.
A couple of months.
November and December as a board.
So are we, so.
Right.
Am I telling him that the board is going to be uh voting on his contract in, at their November sixteenth meeting?
Yes.
And prior to that, we would like to have a sample of his plan. Um, what are the details, what are the steps to start and. Well, the product at the end would be the plan, what are the steps to start and the product at the end? Yes?
Yeah.
So is everyone in agreement, they want to give him the twenty seven thousand? Okay.
Thank you, Karen.
Sure, thank you all. All right.
Okay.
That sounds good, good night, everyone.
Take care, good night.
All right, bye bye.
You need to end, call it, call it, I mean, whatever, whatever the thing that you do is, you need to do, end the meeting.
So moved, so moved. Bye.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night.